Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, January 27th, 2025. Uh, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Artali, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, I'll call the meeting in order. New business referrals, Parks and Rec, Mary? First thing is the asset management plan, and you have a copy of that in front of you.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so there's been discussion over the course of the last year or so about an asset management document, uh, guidelines for the Parks and Recreation Department. So in front of you, I have, uh, one that's for Washington Park and then for Eastern Point Beach. Guys, I'm sorry for the print and how small it was, but initially it was six pages for the park and four pages for the beach, and that was a lot of paper, and I would had to cut and piece things together. But it just kind of shows you where we're at, what we're doing, how we're trying to get it in place. Um, so that way we have a record of what we currently have, what condition some of it is in, uh, you know, when we may have to start budgeting for improvements um, and/or updates. Uh, so, um, the mayor asked me to bring it to show that we are doing something, we are in the process of putting something together. Um, and then this is in my computer, so it's obviously a lot bigger than this for me to read, um, than uh, what you all are looking at right now. Um, so I, I broke down the, all the assets that we have at the, at Washington Park, then at the beach, and then I also have one that I'm working on currently for all our vehicles and our smaller, um, equipment, and then all the other little parklets that we have, uh, throughout the city. So that would be separate, but, um, because the majority of what we have is at the, at the parks, at the park and at the beach. So, um, uh, this is where I'm at with this. Um, it's time-consuming, it's, it's busy. Um, I'm trying to capture everything that I can that I think is important, and, uh, so we can move forward with inspections on certain things and then, um, getting, um, information necessary if we have to do any kind of updates or improvements to things.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So is this, so is this a, an Excel spreadsheet that you just made on your own?
Kinda. Well, mine was a lot worse, but, so I didn't have, I had a, um, I had some help and some guidance in regarding to get some of the columns in place from somebody who does this, and gave me some input on how to, uh, lay it out, because I don't have software, it's, I just have an Excel spreadsheet. And so I initially had just like, okay, Zabursky House and everything that we've done in it, but I didn't have any way to track. So I was, I looked at some ways and venues to, how we could track things and keep track of what's going on.
Um, did we, I forgot if it was Public Works or is there another department that does use a program for asset management, or do we, does every department do it differently, or how do we normally do that?
We're bringing in City Works, and City Works is, uh, is, part of that is an asset management plan, and, uh, Public Works is using City Works.
So is there a reason that we wouldn't plug this into City Works? Instead of doing the spreadsheet separate? It seems like this is extra work.
There's a City Works module for Parks and Rec. We wanted to get, so we spent money in Groton Utilities, spent money in Public Works, we wanted to get it up, uh, and make sure it's working, up and running, and that we get efficiencies there, and we wanted to get this started, uh, before we spent the amount of money that we need to for the Parks and Rec module. So that's why it is what it is. This is gonna work.
So is our, so is our plan to purchase the City Works module for Parks and Rec and then plug this into that program to make it easier to manage?
Correct.
It's just, there's a lot of data to have to enter in a spreadsheet all the time, so, um...
But it's easy now, because I kind of have a goal, like I have a, a format to follow.
I think this, it's also, um, you know, for the park in particular, you can see how many items there are that need to always be, um, maintained. I really appreciate this. I think it's helpful to know, you know, especially like the intervals at which things need to be reviewed and what our staff, um, the staff workload looks like in terms of, because a lot of these things have to be done weekly. Um, so I find this very helpful. Is this something we could have emailed to us, so we have it?
Yeah.
Well, we, well, hold on, let's define that. Do you want the spreadsheet, or do you want it in PDF? The reason we didn't send it to you in PDF is because it gets choppy. And even, even if we send it to you in Excel, you'll have to look at it on your own computer, because the tablet, uh, doesn't support Excel, because I wasn't gonna buy Microsoft Office Suite for periodic use. This, so that's that. So how do you want it? We weren't happy to give it to you.
Um, I mean, I think the spreadsheet is fine.
Okay. Send it to the council on the spreadsheet. Any other questions or comments?
Regarding spreadsheet, or?
No, regarding what was presented. Counselor Sheffield?
Um, I guess, Mary, I guess talking about the, looking at the basketball courts, and I see their condition is, is fair, but obviously not completed at the moment. And of course, we received an email of the complexities of the project right now. Um, and I guess a lot of that stems potentially from the tennis courts that are supposed to be redone according to what the contractor is saying. Um, how is that gonna play into, because we're talking about water runoff, I guess, flooding into the basketball court. So could you give a, a brief detail of how we can address that to where, you know, we can complete everything and everything's in good condition, I guess, so?
So the basketball courts are on track to be completed this spring.
Okay.
Um, we have had no complications whatsoever with the company and with the, the, um, construction of the removal, and, um, we've actually added to, um, based on working with the, uh, the company that we hired to do the basketball courts. We extended our courts eight feet, so they would be a full collegiate size, both of them, basketball courts, and that's something they brought to our attention, that we were short. Um, but in the process of doing that, we had to level off some other areas, and then the weather came into play.
Right.
We do have runoff at the park everywhere, our ball fields, softball field, baseball field, and it's, it's up actually more Park Avenue and Griswold, Park Avenue, you know, Park Avenue, Griswold and Indian, I think it goes, um, because of how it comes off, and off also Mitchell Street, and how it runs off to that. There was a recommendation to, to consider putting in a, um, a curtain drain, but, um, based on our activity at the park, I don't see that as necessary to move forward with the project. The problem that really came into play is weather. Uh, we were getting really low temperatures, and then that, we'd get a higher, a couple of days where it'd be warm, so the ground was freezing, and, and we have that with the baseball fields too. You know, come March, you can walk across it in, in the morning, because it's solid and frozen, and by mid-afternoon, you're three inches into mud because of just the moisture that's in the park itself.
Right. Um, yeah, my concern would be with the courts, with that runoff and how they're redoing the court, would it cause flooding of the basketball court to where it would, you know, have trouble drying due to the configuration, or?
So, we've had rain since they've put down the binder course, and I've taken some pictures of some areas that I saw, some, lack of a better word, accumulation of puddles, but I have those to show them, so when we get to that point, when we start, when we, um, reconvene the project, we'll address that. Um, it's, you know, right now it's winter, they're not doing any work, so, uh, we can, um, make sure that's all addressed and we bring them back in in the spring.
Yeah, because I thought about the draining part, but that could possibly, um, you know, not have the ball fields get water, I guess, if, you know, to get that rainwater instead of having to use the sprinkler for, you know, use excess water out of the city to where you can get storm water that would go down and help out with the ball fields, and if we got some drain thing, we'd lose that water capacity to affect the ball fields, because we're trying to protect the basketball court in, in essence. So, um, but you said it's not necessary, so, uh, I guess that's a good thing, long as, uh, you know, we can keep the, uh, the basketball court and, and have, you know, make sure, uh, you know, it's able to be sustainable, you know, through, uh, during storms and stuff like that, so. Okay, and, oh, and one more thing.
Turn the floor.
The, um, now the tennis court will be redone. Now, will that affect anything as far as, um, you know, water or anything like that, how they do the tennis court, because I wasn't sure how that comes into play to affect?
So the tennis courts are currently being redone also. That, that project is happening actively, they were up there today.
Okay.
Um, so, but the water actually runs down the hill towards Pavilion Five. It does, so I'm not, the water's not gonna affect the tennis courts, it's up above.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't, I don't see that being an issue at all.
I, I was thinking maybe how much more water or less water from the new tennis courts would affect, you know, the other areas, uh, if it's gonna be like bigger and, you know, would it?
Currently, we don't have any water issue coming from the tennis courts.
Okay.
So that, it's mainly from the street side, so Mitchell, Mitchell, Park Avenue, Indian, Griswold, I got that in the wrong order, I know, but, because it comes down that way. Because we, we put the port in place in the, underneath the, the playground up in Washington Park, because when the rain came, it, the wood chips would end up in Pavilion Five. So it's, oops, coming that way, it's not going this way, so we shouldn't have an issue.
Okay.
So let me address it this way. Did we have flooding the basketball courts before we put the new courts in?
Did we have flooding on the basketball courts before we started construction on the new courts? No. But we haven't had flooding currently either?
I understand. Just follow my line.
Okay.
Did we have flooding of the basketball courts, the old basketball courts?
No.
Okay. Nothing has changed. If we didn't have flooding then, we're probably not gonna have flooding now. There's a couple things that, there's one thing that is different. One, if you go look at the basketball courts, basketball courts elevated a little bit more now than they were before. So, but, you know, the courts are flat, so they're gonna, there's water that's gonna collect. The water of the tennis courts, tennis courts are gonna be the same size. It was impervious surface before, we're cracks in there, but impervious surface before is gonna be impervious surface now. So nothing has changed empirically that would cause me to suspect that the basketball courts are gonna be negatively impacted from all the work that we're doing. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, because like I said, my concern from the contractor was that, you know, that needing those drainage areas around, I guess, to protect the basketball court was a concern. So I was wondering if, but if, uh, Mary was saying that it shouldn't be an issue, that we don't need to go through with that project, then I'm okay with that. So, yeah.
Any other questions, guys? Uh, Counselor Norris?
Um, thank you. I know this is a lot of work, so congratulations and getting a lot of it done. Two things is, one, um, responding or following up on Deputy Depot's question. Should we expect money in your 26 budget to reflect purchase of the software, or part of that software?
It, maybe?
We, we have not ma, we have not decided for 26.
I have my first meeting tomorrow.
So the answer is maybe, but we have not decided yet to put it in for 26, because we're still trying to get some runtime on the utility and public works. So a concern that I have is if you implement it too quickly, you know, you got two or three groups that are trying to figure out how to run it, and we don't have anybody that you can get lessons learned or best practices from, and now everybody's all frustrated and up in our, but we're gonna evaluate that.
Got it. And then the only suggestion I would have is if you were to add another column in here, so if anything, for example, the Tyler House, um, God forbid something happened, so you may have to work with finance and risk management company, is what would be the total replacement cost that you could put on the sheet, and then they would know that that replacement cost could potentially have a 20% annual increase or 10%, whatever it is. But, well done, I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
How often will this, uh, be updated, uh?
Well, it's gonna be a working document. Certain times of the year, we do, like, so like, come March, we'll start inspecting fields and stuff at the park. Um, you know, maybe eight, late April, early May, we'll start doing that at the beach, so that everything's ready to go when seasons start. So it's gonna kind of be evolving. Um, if we've, you know, if you got, once you see it electronically, if I'm gonna email it, if there's something that you wanna see quarterly or every, uh, six, every six months, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Lake George soil testing.
All right. Oh, sorry. So a little history real quick. Um, so the Connecticut Eastern, the Connecticut, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, um, got a grant a number of years ago to do a Lake George water, wetland enhancement, making it more of a usable space with paths and walkways and different things. Heidi Komoe from the, uh, Public Works Department was initially working with them, um, and, and they had some issues regarding the soil that's currently in Lake George. And so we had shared with them that we had, had work done in, uh, 2009, we got testing done. Um, it wasn't considered hazardous waste, but it did not meet the requirements or guidelines for DEP for residential or public use. Um, and in 2028, this, 2022, somewhat the same results. So the EC, EC, ECCD, um, started working with the DEP, and it had some, had some, um, some concerns regarding the enhancement part of this in regards to what is presently in the soil. Um, so it was recommended that we get a licensed environmental professional, which we did in April of 2024, and then we did, uh, we conducted a phase one of the soil and the sediments in Lake George. We got our results in the latter part of October, and there was a recommendation that we proceed to phase two, which would be a comprehensive soil and sediment sampling program to fully evaluate into the site and develop a soil management plan. I come to you tonight after discussing this with, with Heidi and Steve from the High, uh, Public Works Department and with the mayor, that we'd like to proceed with the phase two. Um, and we'd like to proceed with the higher, he gave us two scopes of service, but we'd like to proceed with the, the higher end one, because we'll get more detail. We'll have a document on file here in the city that shares with anybody that comes after us, or, you know, wants to see what's in Lake George. We'll have a detailed, um, comprehensive plan for that, a scope of work. It will have what DEP is looking for, Connecticut TP analysis will be there, the, the map out locations of where samples were taken, and we'd also have CAD files, so we have that, so we have that comprehensive, um, report of that, of Lake George. Because the goal is to, initial plan, when they were gonna, the, uh, the enhancement, they were going to relocate some of the, in, the soils that were inside Lake, Lake George already to make burns and different things, and if we can't do that because of the, um, what's in it, they have to find another plan in regards to do the work. So I'm coming tonight to, to ask, uh, to move forward. Marty Brogie Company, Inc. was the person, the group that did the first phase, and it's, so we kind of wanna stay with him, because he's got the history of the property and the area, and so we'd like to move forward to, uh, to, hire him to do phase two.
Questions from the council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think, I know that I've talked to a lot of residents over the years that want us to do something with that part of the park, so I'm in favor of doing an environmental study, so that we can get to that, because obviously we can't do anything without knowing that.
Right.
So otherwise, we're just kind of stuck. Um, so I think residents would be happy to move forward with, with that, even though obviously environmental testing costs money, but, um, I think it'll be worth it. And I think, I think people will be happy when we get to a point where we can decide exactly what we can do with that section of the park.
We actually had a plan. ECCD had a plan. We're ready to go, and DEP, uh, got, and got involved and wanted additional testing, and so that's what started phase one and now phase two. That money from EC, ECCD is now gonna be used for another project with pervious, not perv, uh, yeah, pervious pavers in Washington Park. And then, once we get the results of this, that'll let us know what we can do, whether or not we have to remove the soil, or whether or not we can move it around and use it as part of the construction project, and then they will go after another grant in order to accomplish what we originally were going to accomplish. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
You said this is gonna be phase two of this, um, project. Is, is that the final phase, or is there gonna be more phases of, uh, of this forthcoming?
I believe that would be the final phase, and they have recommendations of what we can, um, hold on, I have it right here. Sorry. Would be, yep, and the recommendations for, uh, so, um, potential remediation and soil management scenarios and other data would be shared with us, so that, or any other recommendations that they feel would be necessary would come from that.
And how often, going forward, would we have to test, you know, test the soil? Should we be doing like every five years, and?
I think that might be one of the recommendations. I don't know at this point.
Okay.
Any other, Counselor Piazza?
Uh, what was the original plan you were speaking of before DEP got involved?
Well, DEP was involved in the original plan with ECCD. There was gonna be a path around, and then there was gonna be a path across with setting areas. It was, uh, it was three hundred and something thousand dollars, I think.
Three hundred and sixty-four thousand, I guess, so.
It was a huge project.
I can, I did bring their rendering, if you wanted to pass that around, just so you can see what they had, what their plan was.
And that's still the goal?
That's still the goal. I just didn't have that electronically, so I couldn't, or I have it, I just couldn't find it.
Right.
So there's still be waterways through it, but where some, or certain areas, they, but they would, where they were gonna build some bridges or platforms that people could walk, and they actually walk around and through, um, the current.
And what about the wildlife that's in there, or even in the waters?
Well, their goal is to leave the trench, some of the trenches and some of that there, so that I believe the, I mean, I'm not sure how that would hurt the wildlife during construction, but, um, they would try to leave some of that habitat there.
The intent is to minimize the negative impact on the far, far of it is there.
Because there's what, what type of birds are in there now? I know the blackbirds, the orange-stroke blackbirds are in there.
I, I don't keep track of that, sorry.
And they have frogs and so forth, but I know the osprey nest has now been moved from, and closer to the Lake George.
Yeah, but the osprey doesn't come, it hasn't come back in two years, so I don't know what happened to that. But there's hawks and stuff that are in, that fly over that, and there's, there's bullfrogs, and there's ducks, and, um, probably just turtle or two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
Um, in reading the scope here, I, I do see that they're doing ten collection sites, but it doesn't mention the depth of the sites. So something I may suggest or recommend is that pre or post, uh, with a new site plan, where they make out the locations and the depth of each collection site, and then which sites will be used for analysis that they determine in their scope. Because right now, it doesn't say if they're gonna take all collection sites in the same twenty-yard area, or they're gonna spread it out, that kind of stuff. Or even, is it gonna be three feet, six inches, that kind of stuff?
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Any city park rules?
So the last item I have is, so, uh, you all know we have rules and regulations for Eastern Point Beach, very specific, very lengthy. Um, we were asked to put some rules, some rules and regulations, or park rules together, just general rules for our parks, and then I included some of the conditions of use for, like, ball fields, pavilions, um, so that we have this, um, you guys know it exists, we have authorization, that it was approved by the mayor and council. Um, at some point, this will probably come back to you, because we have tennis courts on here, but we will at some point have pickleball courts, but I haven't kind of wrapped my head around that yet, they're not here yet. So, um, but this is, um, was asked of us to get this, so that, um, that, the mayor and council, you guys could see what our rules are in general, and we can post these on our website and have them available to anybody in the public.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I agree it makes sense to have rules similar to the beach. Um, my only question, reading through them, um, is, oh, it says no overnight parking. Uh, what about the chargers? The car chargers? Because I know that some people leave their charger, their car on the charger at Washington Park.
They won't be here pretty soon, because we're gonna change the heads, and as soon as you leave it on there and you're full, you're charged, then you start incurring a parking fee. And the parking fee is gonna be enough that, uh, we're hoping that it's gonna keep people off.
What, I don't know if the...
Right now, we don't, we don't charge, so people hook up and they stay, just like up front here. February 1st, we're gonna start charging here. We're working with, uh, ChargePoint to get the new heads installed. We have the heads. We're waiting on them to coordinate with us, so they can come in and turn them on, and then what we'll do is, is gonna be set up so that, once the vehicle's charged, then, uh, leaving it on there, you will incur an hourly parking fee, and it's, I don't know, something like five dollars an hour or more.
Right, but if I plug my car in at 10:00 PM, like, technically, you'd have to leave it there overnight to get it to charge. It's only a level two charger, right?
Uh, no, we're going, I think we're going to a level one.
Oh, level one is plugging into your house, so.
What's that?
Level one is like into your house, like a...
Right, five, into a level three, we're going up, and the charger's gonna be the same as these here.
Right, so that would take, I'm just saying, if someone parked their car there in the nighttime, it would take several hours to charge a car overnight, so.
Okay.
If we're saying, I'm just saying that if we're gonna say you can't park there overnight, that would mean that people can't plug their car in, in the evening and let it charge.
I guess parking and charging, we could draw a distinction between the two of them.
We could add that.
Right? And then the police can decide based on, uh, the vehicle being there, but if it's got a charge. Or do you want a separate line item in the, in the rule?
I, I don't, I'm not saying I want anything, I'm just saying that that rule doesn't make sense if we're gonna have car chargers in the, in the parking lot.
Well, I think it does, because when you're, when you're parking, if you're leaving your car there abandoned, and it's not hooked up to anything, then that's parking overnight. But if it's hooked up to the electric car charger, it's actually being charged, so it's, you're charging and not exactly parking. I understand you gotta park to charge up, and maybe, maybe I meant some words on that, but I think there's a difference between charging your vehicle and then leaving it just overnight, because you don't have anywhere to put it.
Okay.
Counselor Sheffield?
Should that be something maybe stipulated in the, in the rules as an additional?
If, if that is something the council wants to make a recommendation on how to change the wording, we can do that.
Also, I understand this applies to all our parks, not just Washington Park, so we'd have, if, so that we would have to kind of maybe, I mean, we can, we can add some language to that. Um, that's, that's, this is, like I said, a starting point, if that's, if we accept that charging stations at the park, at Washington Park, we could put that in there. I mean...
You can put that caveat or put it in parents.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Then we can make a...
So I'll make that update and bring it back. I'll have it right in the packet for next week.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to the second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Highway budget review, Bill? So the budgets we're gonna look at tonight, highway budget, police budget, are required to you now by the charter, and then I'll have to get them to, uh, the town manager, so that he can incorporate them into the, uh, the budget book for this upcoming budget. So with that, Bill, I'll let you start. This is Bill's first budget presentation, so, here. So, right, because you didn't present last year. This is Bill's first budget presentation, so here, so, right, cause you didn't present last year. So this is our budget, go ahead.
Any questions as far as what we have or what you guys have had that can be reviewed? I start off on page one, summary or the administration page? Anyone have anything specific?
So, so let me give an overview real quick. So if you look at this, the operations part of the budget is up five point seven-three percent. That is uh primarily due to uh salaries. And if you look at the overall budget, we're only up two point four-four percent. And some of that is because we've reduced, or we didn't have as much uh capital projects. And when we get to the capital budget, roads and streets and vehicles, uh Bill will talk specifically about that. But with that, I'll turn it back over to the council. Uh, Councilor Norris?
I haven't read this in detail, so please bear with me, but for your fiscal year twenty-six, roads and streets, you're going down one forty-two, i- if that's correct.
Yes, sir.
But what I would suggest, again, just to suggest it, if possible, go back and read the minutes from the past two years. Town and city, three-pronged meeting, cause they do address some roads or certain things that um the city should consider. And I don't know if that means changing your plan.
Yeah.
For addressing roads and streets or not, but I just wanted to bring that up. If those two years' worth of minutes may be somewhat helpful with that one forty-two dollar figure. That was it. Thank you.
One of the things that goes into that is we have a list that determines what kind of grade and where the road's gonna get over time, based off the, it's a certain score. And then from there, as it goes down the line, throughout all the streets that get put into that realm, as far as when they're being scored on, that's where we determine. This road needs to become on first, second, third, and then if there's any extenuating circumstances, like for some reason, there's diverted traffic because of something that's going on with a capital project. Something else, et cetera, that can kind of drive traffic to another area, that can wear your roads more, that's kind of taken to in fact as well. But it's more, the majority of it goes by off of that list that kind of determines where we're gonna go. Continuing forward.
The other thing that, that drives us, Councilor Norris, is that for the roads that are on the, the list, uh we've already done sidewalks. And stormwater drains and things like that, we do that the year before.
Okay.
So.
They usually follows with that, I mean, or mayor.
No, go ahead.
Usually with that, that list, that's kind of how you determine it, so whatever roads that list has coming up next, generally what you'll do is you'll do the prep work to come in. So just like Mayor was saying, as far as the sidewalks, drainage, anything along those lines, they're gonna be coming up. And then lastly, what'll happen is you have your mill pave, et cetera, coming through, and then that kind of will determine where you're gonna fall in that line.
We will go back and look at the minutes. I don't know, I just, I think we have minutes. Okay, we should, right? Okay. Uh, Councilor Sheffield?
I see an extra seventy-eight thousand for vehicle. Are we having another vehicle added to the uh?
What we had, sir, so off the rip was. We had two trucks that we were looking to replace and we had, uh, the one thing I'll say is we took into account is what we have on the vehicle list to go by. Uh, Ron was good with detailing that for you the first time with that coming through. I also took into account what we had from my superintendent. He's got his guys working in these more frequently than not. And one of the other things, I also got advice from the chief back there was to look at your fix inventory, whatever you have, your receipts. So based off of if you're fixing more than what the asset value is worth, then from there, you kind of determine whether or not this is worth replacing or not, even though it's not in that line. So with everything kind of coincided, these were what came to mind that we needed. The one that is off the, kind of off the cuff a little bit, it kind of hit, was the forklift that we currently have in use. It's reaching over twenty years old and at that point, you know, hopefully it just keeps on going, but when it goes, usually something that old. It's not a little fix, it's usually something relatively catastrophic, unfortunately. So that's why we had something like that kind of was in it, and then we have the other two trucks that we had.
Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, so the state's project for the bridge, um, that's supposed to be starting this summer, as far as I understood. So will that affect the roads and maybe incorporate it in the budget or will not, and that's not something we need to?
So that is actually, we got that moved to, well, I should say we had it moved. Uh, there wasn't anything, when they came with the description on it, about it being detailed at night. So the majority of heavy traffic isn't diverted off during the day, it's gonna be, just like you would normally see if you travel at night on highway, you've got, your majority of your work is done in the evening. So it's, it was one of the things they were doing, they even said with the diversion from where the off-ramp traffic would be going to, it's gonna be temporary, cause they're reopening that back up during the day. So it's gonna be, you'll see no difference during the day, but as they close everything down at night, continue to fixes, maintenance, whatever they're doing with the Gold Star on that side, that's what. You'll have kind of more evening times when there's less traffic.
Okay, so they're gonna close and open, close and open? Cause I know they were talking about the ramps for the bridge and uh for like Bridge Street and then we'd have to be diverted over to Clarence B. and blah, blah, blah.
So this is, that's what they had just said in the last meeting we had.
Okay.
They were, cause we had made sure, I wa- I, I'd asked questions before we ended, really coming up about whether or not it was gonna be during the day or night. And obviously you present some more issues if it's during the day.
Mm-hmm.
Makes things a little bit more rough, especially when you've got places like Pfizer, EB, et cetera, kind of coming through on a regular basis, plus the influx they have with their hires. You know, you're gonna have a significant amount of traffic that gets pushed in.
Mm-hmm.
And so we wanted to see what was the reason for it not being at night, and what they said in the last meeting was, this is at night. They looked at me a little crazy when I asked the question, so I, it, it, it's a, it was a blessing in disguise essentially.
Well, the worst gonna be done at night is the detour gonna be up all the time, I guess that's.
No, no, they're breaking it down, that's one of the things they said. Um, I can't remember the guy's full name from the state, Chris something, but. He said they're breaking down their detours, everything else, so it'll be open again. It's pretty much whatever they can get to at that point in time at night, they'll get that fixed to completion, break down whatever they have, open it back up, and then just continually do that throughout the time that they're going.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I see that you're planning to spend sixty thousand dollars more in engineering on contractual services. Is that for a particular project that we're doing or?
That is for the ADA project that we have going on to make the city ADA compliant throughout with sidewalks, streets, any along those lines as we're going through with what we're at. It's a ADA assessment to see where the city falls and to get us essentially in compliance with what standards are today. And this was, it, it varies on that, it's, it's hard to determine a true set-dollar value, but when it comes to what we have already. With what's new, set the standard, the proper grade, and then obviously where you've got your crosswalks, everything else like that, where there's ADA accessibility. It, that, that's in compliance, it's just the outside standard of what we have to map that in. That's where that dollar value kind of comes in, where it gives us enough of a nest egg to be safe.
So we have to hire a contractor to basically sign off to verify that all of our stuff is ADA compliant?
It's in a, I wanna, I would say, forgive me if I can't find the right word, in, in a lesser sense, yes. What that's going off of is they're determining, yes, whether our, the pitch for the sidewalks are, you know, ADA determined, if that's correct. You know, where they're at, where the ramps, where they come down, if you've got the proper stuff to help aid in stopping a wheelchair, et cetera. They have materials that are specific towards uh ADA that you have to have whenever you're going, especially right near a crosswalk. You have to have a certain pitch per distance, so like one to twelve, two to thirty-six, somewhere in that range that they have. And you have to measure that out continually throughout all streets, and based off of that, that's how you can determine whether or not you're within ADA compliance. So as you do a road or something like that or sidewalk, you have to make sure that your gradient matches with everything else as far as the street. And you might have miss, like I say, misalignments, so like the road might be up higher, but your sidewalk is gonna be within compliance going through as far as matching anything along those lines.
So my question is, do we not have someone on staff that can learn those specifications? Cause, so normally when we do a sidewalk, don't we already have a staff member who says, this is good, this sidewalk? Like, wouldn't that person be the one in charge of approving whether or not it's compliant with the law already?
You, a hundred percent, you're, you're right, but that would be them taking away from their day-to-day tasks that they have already. Everything here with what we have for manpower is, I'm not saying it's stretched thin, but it's stretched to where it needs to be to function. And diversion in that is gonna cause, there, there, there'll be, there'll be issues. We have to, in order to have one person to go off and do that, we have to root with what we have now on staff for the entire city. Would make us one person down from whether it be if that person's a laborer or a heavy equipment operator or master maintenance mechanic or uh maintenance mechanic. Well, whomever it is, that has to take them away from the day-to-day tasks that we normally do and, you know, Monday through Friday to function as normality within the city. And that right off the rip kind of shuffles things around. It's, it's, I should say, like a fragile ecosystem with what we have going on.
So is this an expense that you plan to have continuously or are we just having it for this fiscal year?
Singular.
So there's a, there is a requirement by the state to determine your ADA accessibility compliance for, not just for roads, but also for buildings, parks. And you're gonna see money in the appropriate departments to do this. We're gonna, the intent was to go out, to hire an organization that is familiar with this, has done this before, knows the rules and regulations and requirements. And they can dedicate and, and come up with our plan, once, once, you, so you gotta find out, are you in compliance or are you not in compliance? And once you find out if you're not in compliance, then you have to take that data, put that into a plan for uh correction. Some of the corrections might happen right away, some of the corrections might be put in at the next time maintenance or construction is done on that. On that piece of equipment or on that building or sidewalk or whatever the, whatever the component is. So that's why we're trying to do this.
If you think of it, it's the same way as the list we have for the roads, it follows the same line and critique as that.
So we don't expect this expense then to be in the following budget year? It's only gonna be in this budget year?
Correct. So this is a one-time expense for the evaluation to be conducted. Now, what might uh come as additional expenses in the future are the corrective actions for deficiencies that are identified.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Norris?
So, page one, your twenty-five budget is three mil. You're estimating three mil ninety thousand. How does that difference get covered?
Which page are you talking about right now?
On page one. Looking at your, I think it's your overall budget.
Yeah. Your sum- summary?
Summary, so there's the actuals twenty-four, budget of twenty-five, and estimate twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Your estimate for twenty-five is approximately forty thousand more, if I'm not just right, than your budgeted twenty-five. So how does that difference get covered? Unless I'm reading the sheet wrong.
So you're talking about for, as far as our operating administration?
Well, not the whole thing, looking at total budget, bottom line, your actual is two point eight, your twenty-five budget was three mil fifty-four thousand. Your estimate for twenty-five is three mil ninety thousand. So I'm trying to mask it, there's a difference there between what was budgeted and what's estimated. So how does, how do the city make up the difference of that forty thousand?
Okay, how do we get the estim- how do we determine our estimated budget for twenty-five? We took the first six months, right? And then we just annualize it, is that?
That's, that's what I had for data when I pulled the report initially, when it came through with what we used for our software, was we used the first six months just for the timeframe that it was in. When I initially pulled the report, that's where we gathered the majority of the data off of, that's where we got the, the numbers where it came to. Along with previous data that was put in as far as with twenty-five, twenty-four, et cetera, going back. And what we had for previous minutes and anything else that we had documented within Excel, et cetera.
Oh, no, I'm not questioning how you got to that number.
I, I understand. I, I, I understand what your question is. So right now, the estimate is greater than what we budgeted for. So how do we cover that shortfall? Where did that come from? My suggestion, my comment is how did we get to that number? So we just annualized it, we took a number, multiplied it by two and got there. We're six months into this. We have time to look at what we're purchasing and not purchasing overtime, those kinds of things, so that we don't go over budget. Does that answer your question? And to you guys, is that accurate, what I just said?
The other thing I could say too is that what we have on here too, you have to remember, there's just like with the salt, so like what we have for our winter time, it's not always that we're gonna spend that whole amount. We try to do what we can, obviously to be the best that we can with a tax dollar, that's the utmost responsibility we have here in the departments. It's spending the money most wisely, and we don't always have to have that. But that's enough to where it gives us a comfortable nest egg to where we're not gonna be coming back to you on multiple facets over and over again. For the same thing where, since we've looked over, you, you're obviously conveying, you trusted us to do this. So we try to make it to the best that we can, based off of previous data and then what we have for prices on the date, as long as what we can see projected going on.
So allow me to nickel and dime you there. So you have overtime, you have budgeted five thousand dollars. You're saying for the rest of the year, you're gonna spend an additional five thou-? Cause it doesn't show me in this column where you are to date, so I have to guess.
We got ready.
Under administration, you budgeted five thousand, it says your estimate's gonna be ten thousand. So is that based on you've already spent the five thousand for the first six months?
When we're coming in with the twenty-five budget?
Uh, yes.
Yes. We have, that's why we're requesting a sixty-five right now. We're trying to make sure we're at a comfortable nest egg, that's why there's a fifty hundred dollar change in that. What we initially had budgeted out from twenty-five going in.
What is the driving cause of that higher estimate is doubling?
Well, overtime, no matter what, is not guaranteed. It's just something you can anticipate based off of what you have from previous numbers. Then we have going into the year, that's the one that you have no matter what, especially with something like highway, there's plowing, you could have a flake of snow or you could have an nor'easter. It's just something you have to gather in with what you have through essentially multiple numbers. No overtime within a budget is guaranteed. That's, that's all I could really say to that. You, you can't, you're trying to predict the unpredictable to the best that you can.
Right. So then. So if I go further downwards, there's software maintenance. If you can, I think I already know, but if you could tell me, we have budgeted six thousand. And we're looking to estimate a sixteen-five.
Yes, sir. So that is with City Works, one of the things that this was on, a lot more my end as well, was when I came into it, we have everything going forward with City Works. And we're trying to make sure we implement this program as best as we can, so it's used to the best of its ability. There's a lot of good that's coming with this program and it shouldn't be short-casted with what we have. And to just have something to completion, push it in, throw it in and try your best at figuring it out, how to make it work, is not always the best solution to use your money wisely on that. And with what we had, we had come up, when I talked with my staff, was to try to have some sort of fun right here, just to have. So that when we go and we have this pushed to completion and we have someone either that's gonna be hired on, whatever the decision may be, I, I, again, I'm spitballing out here. With something that could be potentially part-time, we've talked, talked about having it in-house, there's still discussions around, but enough to where people are trained adequately and professionally. To execute this program the way it was meant to be, so that it's a benefit to the city, it's not gonna be more cause to detriment. You know, it's being used and fiscally, the dollars being made put, you know what I mean?
No, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying. So the next question would be sticking with that software maintenance. So is that sixteen-five strictly annual maintenance fee? Is it training? Is it?
No, that is, with the hopes of coming in with that is short-term. We're not trying to make that be a continual long-term thing. The people that we have going through this, we've gotten some, you might, I, the, the two that have been at the forehand of this, they've executed that to where it is. I kind of came as an outsider and tried to pick up where we were. So it was kind of a decent perspective to see what went into it and just how complicated this. Complicated and. And, and also as much of a beneficial asset as this program is. So with. So with both of those being a reality, it's, you have to do your responsibility in making sure that you know how it is that you're doing. You don't just wanna use it for work orders.
Right.
You don't wanna use it for just tracking a tree. You know, whether you're taking it in or out. You wanna use this for the most that you possibly can. You know, to get the benefit towards the city.
So that, that's where I'm going. So I, I kinda get where you're going with this. I know it's only peanuts in the overall scheme of your budget. But if I was to say to you, what is that ten thousand dollar difference? What is it?
That is training, it's essentially just a, it's a retainer. It's if we need it for training, if we need it for bug fixes, if we need it for something along these lines. Keep in mind, the contracts can be different, but these funds that we have left over, that ten thousand, that's gonna be what we need to just make sure what it is we need is capable. That we can actually use it towards that.
All right. I don't need to see it, but if someone was to say, could you itemize that out? So it's ten thousand dollars, it's two thousand for training, three thousand for an additional module, you know, whatever it is, it's hardware, that is something that could be itemized out. Okay, all right.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Um, where else wanna go? I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Not to beat a dead horse, but, so, that line, software maintenance, is not just software maintenance, is also training.
That's a, without, yes, to answer your question, yes. I- it's, overall, I mean, we, we add it, if you wanna have it broken down to where it could be something, I could, I could add more to that, to give you more of a breakdown. That ten is, it's essentially a retainer fee with what we have, so that this company can, either whether it be we're having an issue with this, you know, where can we see if we can tweak something here to make things more efficient? Are we having problems with this being processed through? Like a work order, are we getting stuff logged in on time? You know, are we getting the proper trees tracked that have been taken out, maintenance? As far as with, you know, with anything that's been done, it, there's, it covers that, those funds cover kind of a broad spectrum.
Okay, so, I think, this gives me a little bit of concern, because you're gonna have to defend your budget to the town council. They're not always. So, like, I could see them saying, well, you don't need that, and just saying, and reducing your budget by ten grand. Because you didn't have it last year. If it's just IT support, why can't your other staff teach the other staff how to do it? If you have staff that's really good at it, why do you need ten grand extra to be able to call basically IT to tell you how to use this program? The utility's also using this program, I'm being, playing devil's advocate a little bit, but the utility's also using this program. They've got a whole IT department. I'm sure they're, they're probably, you know, brushing up on it. So, it makes me a little bit concerned that it's vague, mostly because we are not the only people approving this budget. So, you know, what might make sense to us knowing, 'cause we, we know the staff probably more intimately, like what the staff makeup is, what, how things work here. We're way more familiar with that than the town council is. And, but they're the ones that also have to approve this budget. So I'm a little bit concerned with the vagueness, mostly because I think whenever we go to them with any vagueness in our budget, that is usually where they try to cut, because they don't, if they don't understand it, or they don't think it's necessary, they may try to cut the budget, which as you know, not gonna help you. It's not great when they do that, um, 'cause then we have to fight to get the money that we need. Um, so that's my main concern with that, is that I, I do think that that could give us trouble, an explanation like that. Considering that the description, software maintenance, isn't exactly what that line is for. If, if what you're saying is it's also for training and IT support, which is kind of, which again, makes sense. We do wanna use the program, but I think the question will come up, is that absolutely necessary? And I think if they're looking to cut, which they, you know, the town's probably gonna look to cut as much as possible 'cause their, I think their school budget just got proposed at like a-
Six point five percent.
Yes. So generally, what they do is try to cut everyone else's budget to accommodate the education budget, um, which I think always puts us in trouble, so. That's just my concern, and I will share the same concern. I think we scrutinize this budget and the police budget a lot more because we know that we're not the only eyes looking on it, and we kinda have to be prepared for.
To defend that?
Yes.
In my sense, one of the things I would ask is, can you tell me the difference between what the utilities does with their City Works program and what Public Works does?
Me personally?
I'm just saying that in generalization. Because if not, that's the reason why we have this catered program to Public Works. That's why, if we're gonna do this right, and use the tax dollar as efficiently as possible, we need to make sure the public work section of this program is used the most responsibly that it can be. And without that, I'm not someone who's a meter reader, or who can say they're a water professional, or a lineman. And whatever City Works does for the utility side, that's them. I can't say that I'm a proficient professional in that, I'm not gonna know that. But when it comes to what they're doing for my department, that's why I have my staff here with that. And that's why I wanna make sure, and my staff, they all wanna make sure we are trained to the utmost best that we can be with the program.
And does the town use City Works?
Uh, I don't think so. I think they use another program.
Okay.
So anyway, to you and Counselor Norris, your concern, your concerns are heard. We will come up with a stronger and better narrative for this. I mean, it's all-inclusive. Uh, you know, I was looking at another line item we could put that under. I'm not sure it would fall under professional services or contractual repairs, because they're conducting the training. So the people that are installing the software are training us and upgrades and those kinda things. We will come up, we'll have a better narrative for that, uh, on Monday. Counselor Norris?
Just to finish up that, that, 'cause you asked a question, it's like, no, I don't know the difference between what Groton Utilities and you were doing it. But what we are talking about is when you do sit with the town, and they ask that question. I apologize, your answers have to be concise, get to the point. So that's where I was coming from. I agree with absolutely everything you've said. But if it comes across vague or not rehearsed, then there's that doubt was like, well, is it really needed? And I absolutely agree with you. I understand, I'm amazed it's only sixteen thousand. You know, so, I, you know, I commend you. I commend you and your staff for recognizing that need and, and moving forward with it. So you should be commended for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And this presentation of our budget should be a dress rehearsal in preparation for town council. So, thank you for your feedback. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, yes, the administration again, um, it's up like twenty-four thousand. That's gonna be extra compared to what was, uh, budgeted, uh, for twenty-five. Now, is that, um, overtime from, you know, like I said, a million twenty-eight and a million fifty-two on that, uh, operating budget administration?
I'm sorry, say it one more time?
The budget on the administration part of the op- of the operating budget on the summary, uh, a million twenty-eight and estimated is gonna be a million fifty-two.
Hmm.
Um, would that be due, is that overtime extra, you know, what is that based on? Um, the, the extra twenty-four thousand? And then, of course, looking at an extra forty-seven for next year, for twenty-six.
So in total, coming off of that, what we have for, at least for, what we have, like I said, the overtime that we have based off of previous numbers, previous years, comes into that, along with you have the salaries that we have, along with we have in the contract for any sort of bump, along those lines, along with anything that comes through with any raises in, you know, social security, health insurance, whatever we have within our plans. They, they all kinda factor into those gradual jumps within that. There's, I, I wish I'd give you more of a detailed breakdown on that, and I, that's, that's really pretty much from truth be all, that's all I, I really have that I could give you on that.
Okay.
Well, to help you out a little, you do have it broken down. You know, you do say right here, overtime is five. You do say here, the software maintenance is another ten. You do have here that professional services due to lawyer fees is an, an, an extra four thousand dollars. So I think you did a very good job in breaking down what that difference is, so again, thank you.
Any other, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'm sorry. Is there, I know this is in the opposite direction, but your workers' comp budget is going down, is that because in the costs of, well, in general, those things only go up?
It, it varies year to year based on, um, the, the wages. 'Cause it's truly based off of, um, the wages and then what that, um, code is based on Public Works. So for whatever reason, the Public Works wages were down, so when the premiums came through, it dropped to Public Works.
Okay. Perfect.
When I say, when I, when I say down, that's just in comparison as proportion to the entire city, as far as the premium goes, that's how it's broke down.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February third, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? During that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief? All right, Police Department Budget?
Five point nine percent. No questions, good enough, thank you. All right, couple of things, right? So we're spending money, but I want you to know a little bit about what you're spending it on. So, uh, I did run the neighbors' report, as I always do, for the year before, uh, 'cause FBI, and we get these stats from FBI, these are not our stats. Um, the FBI provides a breakdown, I printed out all of Southeastern Connecticut, 'cause I wanna see where we are in relationship to the rest of the police department. I, the reason why I do that is 'cause I wanna make sure we're putting out a quality product. Uh, and what I look at basically is, what does our caseload look like? Um, what classification is it under, Schedule One or Schedule Two? Schedule One means crimes against persons, Schedule Two is crimes against property. And, uh, and then what's our solvability? Um, because a solvability means that we're providing a service to those victims that are out there, and, and we're giving them a resolution to their cases. So, with that being said, last year, we were number one in the area. This year, we're number two by one point three percent, 'cause Waterford beat us by one point three percent. Uh, we're a sixty-four percent solve rate, which is about twenty percent higher than the next one behind us. The national average, again, just as a reminder, is somewhere around twenty-six to thirty percent. Uh, so we're three times the national average at this point. Um, so that's our, uh, that means that we're putting out a quality product. We're, we're solving the majority of the issues here in the, in the city. The other thing is, uh, I look to, I like to look at total calls for service, that tells us how busy we are. Um, and right now, we're at fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety-seven calls as of twenty twenty-four. So, we went out fourteen thousand plus times, uh, to our citizens in our community. So that's that, uh, just so you know what, what we're looking at. Uh, the other piece of paper that I wanted Danny to hand out to you this evening was our fleet. Uh, because last year, as you know, and we'll get to it again this year in the budget, was our fleet management program. Uh, and that just gives you the condition of the fleet. You can see where our twenty twenty-four cars have been purchased. But you can also see that, uh, we have some, uh, still some elderly vehicles that are in, uh, in the fleet, all the way down to two thousand eight, I think is our, is our oldest car right now. But we'll get to that later on. So, going through, uh, the budget, uh, you can see that we have, uh, multiple times now, we have reductions in line items. Uh, as we go through, the reason why is because we either eliminated that line item for a purpose and/or we moved the money, uh, to another line item, because that was where, uh, it better fit. The example would be contractual. Um, for the high percentage ones, the ones that become noticeable, uh, I'm gonna start at training, which is, uh, on page one, it's twenty-one oh five, one one eight, zero zero two. General material and sup- general material and supply. We went up by eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, that's a big jump. Um, that's a forty-one percent. You know, and most of that, believe it or not, has to do with ammunition cost. I'll give you an example of what we just purchased. So in December, we bought nineteen cases, nineteen cases for us, we buy five hundred rounds at a ti- uh, out of each case. That costs us four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, so almost five thousand dollars for one-time training. And the ammunition we bought before that was in August, and we spent four thousand five hundred and twelve. So between those two, we spent over what we were budgeted, uh, as far as ammunition costs. That's just the price of doing business for us, um, in our firearms calls, so. And as we go a little bit further down, um, the next big item that's gonna show up is on the general support contractual services. That's two one one five, zero one five, zero zero dash four. Uh, that has a thirty-seven percent increase, but the dollar amount is quite a bit, that's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. There's two factors there. Number one is that's where we move some of our contracts, because it makes sense, uh, which is why there are minuses elsewhere in contractual services. But a big, uh, percentage of that is because this is a negotiation year, uh, as far as contracts are concerned. So there is money put aside there to assist us with contract negotiations. Um, if we go to page two, the next one that'll be of note is full-time employees, which is two one one five, one one four, zero zero one. That is a thirty-three percent increase. You can see again, that's got a large dollar amount, uh, increase on it, it's sixty-one thousand. The reason why is because we removed the part-time employee and are asking for a full-time employee in place. Specifically, that will be in our records department. Our records workload right now is beyond the capacity of the one and a half people that we have. Uh, so I'd like to put that half person as a full-time. Right now, that part-timer specifically handles, uh, the permit processes, uh, assists with the FOI, um, process, and, uh, does our parking tickets. We write about two thousand parking tickets a year, so she's, uh, she processes those. As well as incoming mail, um, and any special events that we have to go and do inspections on, and then, uh, give the permit for that. So, um, I would like to move that to, to a full-time person. Uh, the next line item is a, uh, computer replacement. This is a two thousand dollar increase, it just, I just wanna show, it does show up as a twenty-five percent. Uh, but that is, uh, from IT, as far as cost replacements for computers. Desktops now are over a thousand dollars. Uh, we just replaced two of them, we're looking to replace three next year, three more next year, uh, plus our MDTs. Uh, if we buy new, uh, police cars, then we have to put the MDTs in them, which are the mobile data terminals, which are our mobile computers. Uh, so that, that would cover that cost. The, um, special events on the same page, two one one five, three three zero 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 five. We went up a little bit in that, uh, six point nine two percent. Again, special events for us, just as a reminder, uh, Sail Fast City Day, just to name a few. San Antonio City, Stuffa Cruiser, the Holiday Festival. And then one, one, uh, process that we have in that line item is our testing. So every time we test for police officers, new candidates, uh, that does go into our special events line item. So, don't ask me. All right. Page three. Uh, fifty percent increase on our reserve fund and equipment, two one one five, eight nine nine, zero zero six. This is our fleet replacement. Now, last year, I asked for fifty thousand dollars per vehicle. This year, I'm asking for sixty-two thousand dollars, five hundred dol- sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars per vehicle because of the price increases. Um, as last year, to do the five-year plan, is a three-vehicle replacement. Um, and I would be looking for the three vehicles again this year, uh, so that's why it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand in total. And, and then, page four, which is general material and supply, two three one five, one one eight, zero zero two. You're gonna notice that's a eleven thousand dollar jump. And later on this evening, we're gonna talk about the resident parking. Well, we have to pay for those parking permits. So right now, we have, uh, fifteen hundred dollars set aside for parking permits. Uh, we buy around two hundred parking permits per year, which that cost covers. We're expecting to have to supply two thousand parking permits, so that goes up exponentially. And that's it, as far as- And that's it, as far as the big-ticket items, I do have Juliette here, because she does a lot of work on the budget, so if it's specific expenses, as far as a line item is concerned, Juliette's here to help me with the, with the questions.
Hey, I'll open the floor for discussion, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, the salaries for police officers go up contractually based on union negotiations?
Correct.
What is the average increase, what is the increase for their pay this year?
So, if you go, I mean, obviously, the coal, right, the acceptable coal, the standard coal is the 3%, right, that's what everybody looks for, it can be somewhere around there, however, market value in our area, there will be a negotiating tactic, presumably, based on that, to raise the pay considerably, based on some settlements that have occurred locally. But what that number might be later on, I don't know. Would it be unheard of for the police department to come in as an initial bargaining and say, "We want 10%"? No, would not be unheard of, but hopefully, we'll settle on 10%.
So, but this year, in the last year of the contract, what is their?
It's 2.75.
Okay.
So they had a four-year contract, and this last one was 2.75, which again, is right around that 3% earmark.
So we will be having two negotiations this year, one for police and one for fire.
So, the line item in the budget for salaries for the chief and the deputy chief, though, the full-time salary line is truly salary, correct? It's not loaded with anything else?
So there is a 3% cola on that for the 26?
Okay, my question is, it doesn't include, really, my question is for Ron, it doesn't include insurance or any of that, that's all separated out separate, correct? So, can you explain to me why the deputy chief and the chief's salaries are going up so much?
Yes, so mine was a fair market value assessment done by HR, also that I had completed some schooling recently, receiving my master's degree, so in order to put me in the median range of what the market value was, the amount of 134 was settled upon, and then the 139 that's reflective in the full-time salary represents a presumed 3% cola on top of that. The same thing for the captain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
I'm not quite sure who the question's for. Does the city have a lock-in purchase price on fuel?
We currently do not, we currently play, pay in market. We've, we've done it both ways, but as of right now, it is market.
Is there a reason why we pay market?
We just haven't entered back into that contract with the consortium, it's been kind of fluctuating, and we were actually, one of the last times, we were on the actual higher side with what we locked in it, so we just haven't locked back in. We will continue to look at that and potentially do that again.
Yeah, thank you.
So we've, we've, we've evaluated it, we've been on both sides, we have locked it in, and then right now, we're currently not, but we are, we are monitoring to determine whether or not we need to lock in the price. Any other questions or comments? Hey, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 3rd, 2025?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion to second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Before we go any further, I meant to bring this up during the highway budget, so I need three council members for the three-on-three with the town council. Okay? Deputy's interested, anyone else is, wants to be on the? Who else? Okay, I have Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Piazin, Counselor Norris. I'll reach out to Mayor Franco tomorrow to talk about her stuff. All right, the next thing is parking survey results, we did a Survey Monkey to talk about resident-only parking and those kinds of things, and the deputy is going to review that. Did you bring anything?
So, I had a nice pie chart and stuff, and for some reason, it wouldn't pop up, but I know that the chief has all the same data as well, and I was just going to go over some, basically go, read over the questions, I think I, if it will open on my iPad. I think when we first did the survey, I did go over some of the questions in the meeting, but just to give the council an idea of what we asked people. So, we basically gave the opportunity to residents and local businesses to answer these questions, they did designate which they were, whether they were a resident or business, which is helpful for us to differentiate kind of where their opinion falls and what impacts that. We only got, we got a handful of responses from business owners, but most, almost all of our responses were from residents, and actually, a lot of them who don't already live in designated residential parking areas, which is helpful. But, so we asked what street they live on, if they live in a residential parking area with signage already, if they think the signage in their area is adequate or not, whether or not they have off-street parking, if they don't, how many spots they think that they would need, what their preference would be for permitting, if they would like a sticker or a tag or that kind of thing. And then, I think, to me, one of the most surprising categories was, we asked what, what hours, if there was restricted parking, what hours those should be. A good number of them said all hours, and I think, to me, that's helpful, because I think we kind of assumed that the 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM is the only problem, but we clearly have EB workers parking on people's streets at other hours as well, because some, several people complained about that, that it's not just those morning hours, it is mostly those hours, but there are a lot of respondents who said that it is all hours, that they have people parking on their street that don't live in the area. And then, you know, we, I, I think we had a discussion in the meeting about parking for businesses, and I know we have the parking, the off-street parking, but we're looking at strategies to help the businesses and, and make sure that the signage is clear, and that there is enough parking for the small businesses, and maybe how to differentiate that, because I think that's part of the issue, is how do you differentiate between business parking, because EB is a business, but if the intent is to provide parking for our small businesses, like restaurants and cafes and hair salons, that we make sure that we're differentiating so that, that they have space to park. I mean, I think the, the chief and I, we, and the mayor, we all have met and kind of gone over the results, and I know in that last meeting, we, we kind of discussed what the next step was, and so I think, if I, I can just hand it off to the chief, if you want to go with what we're going to do with that information in our next steps.
Certainly.
Jeff?
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so presently, we have two things, number one, we have a parking permit process, and like I said, that's for some 200 residents. The way that that works right now, it's a $20 request, it's annual, and if you have off-street parking, you are not allowed to have a permit, okay? And the streets that are eligible for that are under a 2016 resolution, so in our parking ordinance, it says that the streets can be set by resolution, so we don't have to change the ordinance once this street list is made. It also stipulates in the ordinance, which has not been changed, that residents can come and petition the council if they would like their street added to the resident-only parking areas, that's up to the local traffic authority, the mayor, and the council to do that. So like I said, we handle about 200 a year right now, it costs us about $1,200 and change to buy those permits, they are colorized, they are by number, and they are given directly to the resident, and their windshield sticker, it goes right on the windshield, that's where it applies to, so my recommendation later on in the permit process that we stick with that, because that way, it can't be handed off to other individuals, visitors, whatever, and it just reduces the percentages as far as misuse is concerned. So that's the first thing. The second part is the ordinance, the ordinance, the only part of the ordinance, the parking ordinance right now is under 215, the only section of 215 that I would want to address would be section six, and that has to do with the resident-only parking. And specifically, if we get into that, so, under restricted parking area right now, there is an hour set, and this goes back to what the deputy was saying about, you know, should we have an hours for restricted, or should we have it as a full-time? I'm making the change or the recommendation that this be the full-time, if we're going to designate resident-only parking areas, that's what they're going to be used for, so I have removed the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM timelines on that, and, and then also, with the requirement that those vehicles have to display the parking permit at all times in the windshield, there's no reason why they shouldn't, like I, like I said, we, we give them the sticker, they come here for it, and they can, they can put it right on their vehicle. And then, under 6.2 designation resident-only, so I just took out upon receipt of a request for designation of a street or streets as a residential parking permit, the mayor and council, so I just left it as the mayor and council may designate by resolution a residential district, so that, you don't need a petition, you could be made aware of a public safety hazard, I just didn't want to leave it as, it has to be by petition, it could be just something, if all of a sudden, I came and reported a high accident rate in an area or a pedestrian problem because, you know, single street parking or one-sided street parking, we had to, or lighting, or whatever it was, as an issue, I think that mayor and council yourselves could make that determination as to whether or not that was needed, so. The resident-only under 6.5, I did make a change there, it had a minimum under section five, I don't think minimum is necessary, I think that the number needs to be determined on by council, as far as how many that, how many parking permits would you be willing to issue to a resident? Now, the deputy did come up with a set of questions that had to do with that, should it be by driver, should it just be a set number, should it be by vehicles? Again, there are arguments for all or none of those, depending on what the, what the determination of the council is, and, you know, the direction that you would like to move that section. I'm thinking that we just go with a set number, it's the simplest way to do it, and then everybody gets the same amount. 6.6, so we had two classifications of permits, there was residential, and then there was resident-only, the difference was that one was good for 24 hours, so if you were having a party, or if you were having a festival, an event, et cetera, you could come and get a 24-hour permit, and then you had to turn it back in again to the police department, that one was not a sticker, that one was a placard that we gave that individual and they had to turn in to us, I think that leads to confusion if we're going to designate resident parking-only areas anyway, so I just took out anywhere where indicated the residential parking. Also, the guest tags, again, I removed that, because we're going to resident-only parking, so the resident will get a certain amount of stickers or a certain amount of parking permits, and they can apply them as needed. The next page, the same thing, we took, I took out the guest tag, I took out the resident parking, and then finally, into 6.8, I took out the specific dollar amount. This is a change that's ongoing with all of the city ordinances, in that the specific dollar amounts are getting removed, and in its place, it says, see the fee schedule for the, for the city. The reason why is because fee schedules, again, are changed by resolution versus ordinances which require public hearings and two meetings, et cetera, so it's a more difficult task to get an ordinance changed. Right now, and again, going by the questionnaire that the deputy provided to us, people do not want to pay even the $20 for a resident parking, majority don't want to pay for it. So the recommendation right now is we zero that line for a resident parking permit, however, because we still leave the words fee schedule in there, future, this council and/or future councils could come back and say, you know what, we're going to pay for a parking person, or we're going to pay for an infrastructure improvement, or we're going to pay for more parking signs, therefore, you know, we're going to use this program to help us do that, so we are going to re-implement that 20, or maybe even raise it, you know, but, but that's up to the council and the local traffic authority. And that's where the ordinance sits. And then the final part of this is the streets, so the mayor had me go around and take a look at, you know, what represented a half-mile area from our most-traveled roadways and our number-one business, which in the city is obviously electric boat, there's some 12,000 cars that we deal with on a daily basis, so, you know, that, that is the most impactful. So, given that, looking at a half-mile distance from where those transit roads are, the list that, dang, they got this, right? Did they get this, the street list?
Yes.
Okay, so you have the proposed parking list, the carve-outs, so these streets, I went and looked at physically, and then I looked at the GIS mapping system, the carve-outs by the GIS mapping system are commercially, are commercially zoned presently, so that's the reason why you'll see the carve-outs as far as the numbers or the range of numbers is concerned. So in those areas, we would put the parking limit on, the rest of it would be, from beyond that, those areas, then it would be restricted to resident-only parking. I would recommend now, you go around town, you look at, or the city, you go around and look at the parking zones, they're everything from 30 minutes to three hours, if you look at the parking ordinance, there's no stipulation as to why we have 30-minute parking versus three-hour parking, nor is there historical data, I can put my hands on to show, why there's 30-minute parking or three-hour parking. So I'm recommending that we zero it out from the very beginning, we go back to, we go to two hours, and everybody gets a two-hour commercial parking area for those carve-outs. So there's my list of proposed streets, and then there is the 2015-2016 list from the existing, there are some that do not exist on mine, because I was looking at the half-mile mark versus further out, some of these are down by Eastern Point, some of these are north of the fort, so again, looking to see what council wants to do, how many of these, you know, do we want to incorporate the existing onto the proposed, do we want to start again with the proposed? There's no, again, going back and looking for some kind of data as to why the decision was made, there's nothing, I can't find anything. So, I, I can't tell you how, how council came about these streets to start with, but if we go along the list, I will point out the ones that are not on mine that you may consider. First one is Baker, then there's Eldakin, then there's George, then there's High, there's Hines, there's Latham, there's Morse, there's Pleasant, there's Slocum Terrace, and then on the resident-only permits, there's Central Boulevard now, it's not Central Avenue, they renamed it, that's down by Eastern Point, there's Meach, and then there's Shore Avenue, and those are the ones that do not exist on the proposed list, so if you'd like to add them, we can certainly do that, and that's about it for me.
Okay, I'll open a floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to add, I do think when it comes to the beach, that those areas, years ago, they weren't resident-only parking, because I know when I was a kid, we used to park on those streets, because there was no, there weren't restrictions.
Okay.
So, you used to be able to park on Tyler, and then walk into the beach, and so, that's what people used to do. So at some point, that got changed, because so many people were doing that, so I do think the ones that are down by the beach, I do, I think that they should still be included on the list.
What I'm going to suggest to the council is that we just take this list, and we marry the two lists together and include them all, because that's, that will cover what we have now, plus the new requirement, the new requirement, the new... The new requirement, the new recommendation which is. Building eighty eight to a half mile. Is that, will that work for you or is that going to be cost?
Well, Public Works, you know, I'm going to work with Bill as far as Public Works signage is concerned. We're going to have to obviously put in the resident parking only where it doesn't exist. It will be by permit only. The other thing is that we are going to have to give, if if this is approved. We're going to have to give residents time to come in and do an application process. And again, how many permits do you want to issue? That's got to be settled. But they're going to give an application process and that's going to be on an annual basis. And is council okay with a zero fee for right now as opposed to the twenty dollars that currently exists?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but do you, so the the fees that we get for. Parking violations. So once we have resident only parking and we ticket cars. Are those fees coming back to our department or they go to the state?
No, we can't do that because then it would be self-serving. By the way, for transparency, this is not a police department ordinance. This is a local traffic ordinance. We can't be self-serving in that manner because then it's, we're trying to write something and then go out and ticket people for it. That's not a good thing. So right now, the 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 parking tickets that we do get come back to the general fund. They do not fund the police department.
But they do come into our budget.
They come to the city, not to the state.
Correct. It's a city ordinance, so city fines come back.
I guess my question or my thought is. That if we don't charge anything, we're essentially charging all the taxpayers in the city. To protect the parking for the taxpayers in this area. And are we okay with that? You know what I'm saying? That's, well, and I think, I mean. What was your budget for the permits?
So we're going to go from fifteen hundred up to eleven thousand. Cause we're, we're calculate, well, the estimate is that we'll have some two thousand permits if everybody gets three.
Counsel Patterson?
So with the changes that we are planning to make. Will we be monitoring like any of the impact on like traffic flow or congestion? When we do put these parking permits into place?
So there's street parking already, so congestion and traffic flow is not going to change. There are traffic studies out there done. Not only that, but we have counters in place that shows us what our daily commute traffic looks like. Some of our roadways in a thirty day period is is very high numbers. We had one that we just did, uh, Rainville was a hundred and ninety four thousand in thirty days cars. And then Thames was another forty seven thousand in two weeks. So, I mean, it it's, so that's the reason why this area is targeted. Because it's high traffic area that impacts residential parking. Because these individuals have to park somewhere. Unfortunately, they're taking spaces that residents would otherwise use. And some of these residents don't have off-street parking, so they have to be able to park. And if they're not doing that, they're also taking a small business parking. Deputy was correct in referring to that. Because right now, there's, you know, businesses that call us on a fairly regular basis to report that. We have issues with those commuters parking in in those small businesses. And that's supposed to be more of a turnover or transitional because they're there for an appointment. They're supposed to be in and out. And when you park there for six or eight hours, you just took a space that could otherwise be used for a customer. Now, along those lines, I did ask planning to look at ordinances that are in place. In shoreline communities that have small business parking only. Only because I want to see what the legality of that is. And if that's the case, then that's something else that I'll bring back and we'll discuss that in council again. Cause how is that enforceable? My question, and again, I don't know, but my question right off the bat is, it's a public road. So how do I enforce small business parking as opposed to business parking as opposed to commuter? So, and I have to make sure we stay legal, right?
Other comments? Counsel Norris?
Don't laugh. Well, thank you.
You could have points on here, what?
No, the more you talk, the more you answer my question. So, but I didn't see in here. So let me get this straight. Is there anything in here that aims at vehicle size or weight?
No, we haven't got to that one yet. So the next thing, and again, I talked to the local traffic. So this can only take place if the LTA says it's okay, right? At the end of the day. So one thing that I'm I'm very passionate about is to limit out. The truck trailer parking and or commercial unattended trailer parking in commuter, in residential areas. So that's one thing that we will look at later on. I'm going to come back with that. I already alerted the mayor that I would. Again, for another discussion on that.
Okay. For it to be considered residential parking only.
Right.
The vehicle needs to be registered to that home.
Correct.
Okay. If a resident. Requires visiting nurses. Will they be able to get a, an additional parking pass? So that their care provider is not?
Yeah, so we can certainly add that. Right now, we have guest parking permit, right? So you can get a guest permit for twenty four hours. So we could apply a guest permit language and change that to caretaker. Caregiver for a special consideration when it comes to permits. So I don't see why we couldn't do that. But here's the thing is. You know, right now we limit to two, okay? So I'm saying that we go to three is maybe three is enough for that. Or maybe we go to four and four is enough for that so that I don't have to put in the additional language that you're looking for.
However, they're not going to get three passes if they don't have three vehicles registered.
They can. Everybody would get a flat three. Right now, the way it's written, everybody gets a flat three. Because the guidelines on how you want to set that up is open for discussion right now. So do you want it by driver? Do you want it by car or do you want a flat number?
I yield my time to the deputy mayor.
Well, I was just going to say, that's a difficult question because in the survey. I think the response was almost fifty fifty of whether people thought it should be by registered. Vehicle or licensed drivers in the house. It was very split in the survey. It was not definitive at all. It wasn't like ninety percent of people thought one way. It was, I mean, it might have been close to sixty forty, but it was, it was not, there wasn't, didn't lean one way or the other really strongly. I think. Having the guest passes and maybe we analyze what that that language looks like.
What do we do now?
Right now, we do, you can apply for a guest pass for twenty four hours.
I understand. What do we do now as far as driver or vehicle?
We do drivers. Right.
That's what we do now. And that's working now. Counsel Norris?
But the driver needs to live in that house.
Correct. And that's, the ordinance is pretty clear about that. You can't register, you can't apply for a parking permit unless you have a vehicle that is. In that residence.
Well, those, on those two different things, it's either, so you can have a vehicle. All right, how do I say this in front of a police chief? You can have a vehicle. Registered to a different address, but live in that home.
Right, and we would still give you the permit because you live there.
Got it.
Right. If you have a car and you live in that residence as a driver, then you're getting a permit. Up to two, right? Right now, we limit it to two.
All right. Thank you.
So my recommendation is limited to two and for the drivers. Two drivers per household. Counsel Piazza?
So I'm just trying to understand, so let's look at Smith Street, which is heavily trafficked too. EV goes up. So most of the people in certain sections of Smith Street do have off-street parking. So they will not get a pass?
No, this would take that. Everything on that road is is resident only parking.
Okay.
That's it.
So even if they have, because I know some people who have lots of visitors for whatever reason. I don't get into that, but, um, so those, those visitors for them can park there. Or they have to have a pass.
Right.
Okay.
Now, we're going to give the windshield, if we stay with the program that we have, it'll be the windshield stickers, which makes that kind of problematic. Because they can't pass those from one vehicle to another.
Right. So then, let's say, I'm not sure if this looked at. So you have somebody that's like. Uh, I'm in town, blah, blah, blah. Can we stop by, yada, yada? So what happens with that and I'm assuming it's Monday. I'm sorry?
They take their cars, they put them on the road and they're.
And you park in the driveway? Okay.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I was just saying, I thi- I think. There are, in order to kind of solve the problem of. People who don't live on the streets parking there, there has to be some kind of. Negative, like there's no perfect way to fix it. And I think that, I know that I've lived in an area where. People have parked on the street that don't live there. Or there's resident only parking. And I have done that exact thing, pulled my car out and had someone else park in my driveway, like someone visiting. And it's kind of a hassle, but I feel like it's less of a hassle than having all your spots taken up by people who don't live on your street. So to me, I think that's a reasonable expectation. I think maybe we, if we. Put some sort of language in whatever the notice is of like, we understand that there's a limited number of passes. But in order to prevent, you know, non-residents from parking on the street. It may require you to allow visitors to park in your driveway instead of on the street and swap your cars or whatever, something like that. So that people understand, we understand that that's kind of a pain. But if we're going to have a permitting process to prevent people from parking in front of your house who shouldn't be there, there's got to be.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is to remove the commuters, right? To give more open spaces to the residents so they can park in front of their houses. Now, the ordinance does have language that there's no guarantee. Just because you have a permit doesn't mean you guarantee parking in front of your house, number one. Number two is first come, first served. So it's a public street. Yes, it's a restricted area. But other residents, your neighbors can park, you know, a- as those spots become available. So this is not, I don't want to sue anybody wrong thinking that if they get a permit from us, they're guaranteed, you know, right there. At their front doorstep parking because sometimes it just doesn't take place.
Right.
But it should remove the commuters from the roadway. So it should give them more options on on these residents. And again, I went through the GIS mapping. I did not put resident parking where businesses or commercial zones exist. So this is only for residential areas, designated residential areas.
Okay. Counsel Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just thinking that, so, of course, I want to go back to my work for buses. So we don't pull those into the driveway. Sometimes a bus driver may be doing completes their last run. But they're going to be picking up, say, a team two hours later. So there are some bus drives that live, I'll just stay in Gorton City. They'll pull their bus in front of their home and wait till they actually have to. So how does that go?
That's up to what the council.
It's just something to think about.
See that as an issue.
Okay.
I mean, they're parking overnight. They're just there for a minute and then.
Yeah, some might be there for a couple hours before they take off, so.
Is it foreseeable that we would get a complaint from your neighbor saying, this is school bus parked, probably?
I haven't had anybody.
Reasonable starts to run out and start taking in school buses, no.
Right, right, right. No, no, no.
So again, we're trying to be reasonable with this too, right?
Exactly.
Aspect to it, which police officers are allowed to use discretion. So we use discretion in that case.
Do you? Counsel Patterson?
So. Have we ever looked into probably trying something like a digital parking system where it's like tied to a license plate or something?
So the LTA and I do not agree on that right now. I, uh, so, yes, there has been a proposal in the past to put in parking meters. It takes away the, from my point of view. It takes away the requirement for us to go out and monitor it because it does it electronically. Payments are done automatically. Fines are done automatically. And the, uh, the city gets a percentage of those parking tickets. And the company that decides to put them in gets the other percentage to maintain their infrastructure. Here's the problem on the negative side. You select that vendor, you're stuck with that vendor because it's their equipment, you know. They they do the maintenance, et cetera. So if you don't have a good experience with them. From moving forward, working conditions, then, you know, that could become problematic as far as that. The days of sticking quarters into meters is over. That went away a long time ago, right? Right, yeah. So now, I mean, if you look at at commercial parking areas that do have these, I mean, you may have one device for. A quarter mile strip and you go and you you put your, your, your code in and then you put your license plate in and that's it. You know, we're taking care of that. I mean, I've been parking hard for quite a bit and that's what I do there, so, yes. If for simplicity, it it's very easy. Like I said, the only negative part would be we select the vendor, we're stuck with that individual. So you have to be very confident that, not stuck, that's a bad, you know, that's probably negative. But that's the working relationship you have to build on is with that vendor at that point.
This is our starting point. Do you have all your questions answered for bringing the ordinance on Monday?
Yes, so I'm going to ask, add a, so if if, just so I get this straight. I'm going to add the missing streets to the street list that I had. I'm going to add caretaker as far as a parking pass. We're going to limit it to two and it's going to be based on the driver.
Correct.
That's it.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February third, twenty twenty five.
So moved, second?
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stench of motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Last thing is group council meetings and discussions. So you guys had meetings, talk about them. Who wants to start? Counsel Sheffler?
I think we had that discussion the last mayor and council as far as our committee.
So what, what, the reason this is on there? The council asked to. The council asked to just, to put this on so you could discuss this at the, at this council meeting. So that all the counselors could listen to the other meetings and understand what's going on with the meetings. That was a request from the council. That's why this is on here. Counsel Norris?
So, yes, I do remember that and I do agree with that. One of the ironic things was at the last meeting that we had. We decided to have the meeting together. So at that meeting where we're together, both committee one and committee two. Absent of council members that were there, got to hear what each other was working on, what was still on the referral list. They also got to hear motions and and voting on. Things that should be removed or things that should stay on. And then we also talked about what are the next steps. Hence, the email or the conversation, last council meeting was, can we please get certain updates on a couple of things? As well as can we have Sierra come and give some updates? So those are the, some of the things that we did talk about. But I did say unfortunately, there were a couple of council members that were not there. So we could not get to.
And I was, and I was not there.
Right.
So we said we were going to discuss it at the mayor and coun- at the, the committee of the whole meeting. At the, at the end of the month for that month that we're having committee meetings. And that's the purpose of this now. Now, I, because we had four counselors there, I called up. Foye, Russell Blair. And here's, I'm going to give you some very strict guidance on this so that, because having four counselors there, you have a quarrel. You have a, you have just had a mini cow. Now, the way, but, and, and I've already had pushback on this and said, well, no, it's published, no, it's on the agenda. Oh, it's okay. It's not okay. It is a committee meeting. So, the way that you get so that you don't have a mini cow is that during the meeting where you're having the, 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 let's say, for example, public safety, only the public safety members can talk, whether it's two or three of them. And then, if there's anybody else that is a counselor there, all you can do is observe. You cannot interact, you cannot ask questions, you cannot offer anything else. Cause if you do that, you now have four counselors and you have a quorum. And now, you have just had an unauthorized meeting. Now, the pushback is, no, it's published, it's everything else. A cow was not published, you just had a mini cow. If you guys, the four of you are talking back and forth, you've just had a mini committee of the whole. Okay? So, I don't have an issue with the groups there, but we still said we were gonna discuss it here in the event that people aren't, one, in the event that there are members that aren't there. And two, because the mayor's not there. So, for the council to go off and discuss amongst themselves and then to task the mayor, you need, this needs to be discussed here. That's why we talked about doing that here. Okay? The other thing is minutes. I need you go, you guys to go back, look at your correspondence that the city clerk has given you. And some of you owe minutes from the past. Okay? The requirement, if, uh, city clerk, what's the requirement for minutes?
Um, if there's a decision made, it has to be within forty-eight hours, the minutes have to be given.
Okay.
Or the decisions have to be given within forty-eight hours. Minutes then can be up to a week.
So, those minutes need to be provided to the clerk so that she can post them. Okay, and then, my last comment is for those of you that are liaisons to committees, I need you to ensure that you are periodically attending those meetings. Okay? And that, the, the purpose of that is so that you can bring back in for, one, you're representing the council at the meeting, but two, you can bring back information from the meetings and then present them, uh, to the mayor and council. So, that's that. Counselor Sheffield?
I stipulated in my minutes as Counselor Norris and, um, Counselor Piazza as guests to the meeting. They weren't part of the, of present at the meeting, but they were, I stipulated in my minutes as guests. So, that means that they had interact, you know, they were able to ask questions, but they can't vote. So, that was my stipulation of far as present, as far as members of the committee, Deputy Mayor Depot and myself, and then guests were Counselor Norris, Counselor Piazza. That's just like, if you were to come to our meeting, you would be a guest of the meeting and not an actual person as part of the transaction as.
The, the di- the difference in this case is that now you suddenly have four counselors. You have a majority of the council. So, you have just, and once they start interacting, whether they're asking questions or offering opinions or anything else, you now have just had a cow. A mini cow, cause you got four.
Right, but we've had that happen before.
Well, I.
Prior to, you know, like I said, we've had.
What I'm telling you is I went to the Foye
Okay.
to talk to him, to get our judges ruling on it, so that I could come back and feed, give you guys feedback so that, uh, we, cause the whole thing is about ensuring that the, so there's two parts for you. One is records, the other part is public access to meetings. Right? So, even though you may have been interacting in a group committee meeting, the fact that there were four counselors, if you guys are back and forth, it is no longer a group committee meeting. Now, you made it a cow because you have a majority of the council.
And that doesn't include the mayor?
So, when you go into the charter, the charter is very clear on a mayor and council meeting.
Right.
Meaning four counselors and the mayor. Right? But a ca- a committee of the whole is not discussed in the charter.
No, I'm saying a group committee, cause remember, you're saying committee of the whole, but this is a group meeting. What is that stip?
As soon as you get a majority of the council that are interacting, it no longer becomes a group committee meeting, it is now a cow.
And that doesn't include the mayor?
No. You have a majority
Okay.
of the council that are meeting and discussing something that needs to be in a different format, meaning the committee of the whole.
Okay. So, it, it's, so let's say if there was two council members and the mayor, or let's say three council members plus the mayor, that doesn't count?
Correct.
Correct.
That's, okay.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
So, my recommendation is gonna be, go back to how we had it, split it up, and then do this like we said we were gonna. Or, if you're all gonna get together, then, then the two people that are not part of that committee can't interact. I mean, you can't ask questions, you can't get involved because now, if you, if you have a quorum, meaning a majority of the council, then we have an, we have an issue. Counselor Norris?
So, A, I think what I heard was, Foye was saying that a council member cannot attend another meeting.
Nope.
Where.
It's not what they said. You can attend, but you cannot interact.
So, that's, if I can finish, please?
Please.
Okay. So, they cannot attend a meeting that may potentially have four council members of which they interact. For example, if there is a beach and parks committee meeting, four council members can turn up, but they can't ask questions of the Parks and Board Commission?
Right. Because then what happens is, it now becomes a meeting. Right? I mean, if you're, if they're there, they can observe, but if the ca- so, this is, it's a different, you, this is, that is different. Now, let me tell you why it's different. If the couns- four counselors show up at that meeting and they observe, they can ask questions. But once the council starts interacting amongst themselves, you've now just had a meeting.
Got it.
So, it's about the number of counselors that are present and interacting. Counselor Piazza?
So, this would be very similar if we're out in public and then all of a sudden, four councils happen to be together and I say, oh, so, you know, I was just talking to somebody, blah, 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 I start talking about my committee.
Right.
And then Steve says, oh, I know that person, blah, blah, blah. So, it's very similar there. That's the same thing. So, we basically have a informal meeting, but could be considered as a cow.
Correctly.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions on that? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Counselor Piazza?
Sorry. So, are we going to discuss anything here and offer our things or that's off the table?
Waiting, but nobody seemed to be interested in doing it.
Well, kinda, it was real quick and then it kinda rolled into, you were explaining about how the meetings go. So.
Okay, if you have information?
Well, I was just.
You do have, you do have members that weren't at the meeting? So, go ahead, please.
Well, um, community development, so basically mine is quickly was, uh, discussing about, uh, art in the city. And, um, working with Sierra, and so, would like to get an update from her, so, and also for Mary Hill in discussing about, uh, city day, cause it was brought up as a referral as far as fireworks, but, um, so, I don't think that's going to happen in this year in the budget, but maybe something else will. Um, but art in the city is, you know, obviously, it's a long-range plan and getting together. But my plan was to, uh, collaborate, collaborate with other, uh, with many different artists. I've had a lot of people very interested and that I would like to have them, um, do art themselves, like explain what the history of the city of Grotton is, and then have them do their own art. And then I have concrete blocks at my place that they could do their own art with city of Grotton represents to them. And then their own type of art, and then present that either by digital display or whatever it is to the council and say this is what their thing is, just to try to build from there and, you know, slowly but surely develop it. But Sierra is on the other end of it too, in a larger part. So, that's basically those two. I did a, also suggest that maybe one of the items that's on there is, uh, um, gardens in the city. I know they used to have them before. I wanted to look at the history of it, cause I know Lisa.
Or you're talking about?
No, no, not rain gardens, vegetable gardens, cause I believe they had them over by the police station there. I remember they had them there. And I know Lisa, Lisa McCabe used to kind of was on that one to do it. So, um, I had, did talk to Mary Hill in reference to that and she said there are, you know, some people she knows could do education, possibly in the summer with the children, the summer program, so that's kinda like in development also.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Uh, the only active thing on, on, in public safety is the parking ordinance, which we discussed tonight. Um, I don't have any, anything else in public safety that's currently be- being worked on.
Counselor Sheffield?
I'm all set.
Counselor Norris?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries.
Thank you.